Thank you, welcome to the Infrastructure Services Meeting for today. The first thing up today is a public forum. We've got Sir Julian and Don Anderson talking on behalf of the Warrington Brake Pads Association. Would you like to come up to the table please, gentlemen? Now, in order to assist you if you want to talk to it, we will have Google Maps up online on screen if you'd like to talk about the site visuals, would you like that?
No, I'm staying. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chairman and ladies and gentlemen. I've come along here after reading the ADT report yesterday of the recommendation of the council on closing this track that has been restricted with the placement of two rocks now approved illegally for the last about fifteen years. The report that I've read from the infrastructure policy engineer which you now all have horrifies me and it appears to be very circumspect in the sense that wants to echo a view that's been probably promulgated by the community council for the last fifteen years. We have put up arguments on the historic use of that area and the fact that we believe there's no safety issues. If the question of the legality has now been resolved, as I understand it has and it's taken fifteen years, we have stated that it's been a paper road for that period of time. There's never been any investigation by the council apparently until the last month or so where they have agreed and got a legal opinion to say that it is a legal paper road, so that one can be put to rest. The only question that appears to be before this report is one of safety would be the only reason I would imagine that the council would take an interest in it. So if I could just remark on some of the statements that are made in that, if you all have that report, I'll just refer to it on page one of your report. And there's a summary that says that amongst other things in 208, safety concerns and mitigate damage to coastal dunes. Now, the report, if this wants to be accurate, coastal dunes at least three quarters of a mile away, a dune is a mountain of sand, normally windblown. There's no sand there that would create a coastal dune. The second paragraph says recently the provenance of this restriction to vehicles has been challenged. I would have to state that that isn't the case, it has not been recently. There's letters on file and I think councillor Noon here would tell you that we have brought this matter up since pretty early inception. Also, the report and its colouring if you like, it said that the coastal community board has asked for it to be remained closed. It should have perhaps stated that it was on a vote of three to two and perhaps those three that were in favour of keeping it closed were all involved in the original decision. I wouldn't say they conflicted, but they may be. The two of them, as one was the chairman at the time it was closed, the second was a deputy, now he's the chairman and the other's a deputy, I think. And the third person was the councillor from Warrington who within probably a week of the decision wrote an article in the Briskin News about how traffic etc should be stopped from going on the beach or bay as we're talking about it. So in other words, she has a view other than the straight view of whether to look at the legality of moving those rocks, she has a view that nobody should be allowed down there which is not the subject of, that is quite illegal at this stage. It also mentions safety improvements are to be made to reinstate, big chat says etc. Well, we claim there's no safety issues, there's no record of any problems. The implication, it says sustainability, use of the vehicles on the track may impact on the coastal environment. There's no evidence submitted for that, it's been used for over a hundred years, in fact since the area was probably first settled, their access roads, transport went across the bay because of the bush etc. And in fact it was originally, there were fences right around the bay to, it was easier to do that than to move on to the land. The recommendation is to see that it is kept closed. Our recommendation is that the rocks should be removed as legally they should be, the track should be in my view left as it is, and it should be monitored over the holiday season to see if there really is any problems. None have been cited in this report. On the introduction, once again, the report seeks approval to temporary close of track, there's no history of safety issues in our view. In the background, the track was not formed by the council but has been created by members of the public crossing the beach. Now, this isn't correct, the DCC have not been involved with that area for a great deal of time. This track existed right back into the Wackawadi County Council days. In 208, the council installed two large rocks around safety concerns. It doesn't say to the extent of the safety concerns and how many people, how many people made the original submissions, there are no dunes. The board requested that vehicle access to Briskin Bay Beach intersection of Bank and Bay Roads continue to be restricted. I've noted that that wasn't the unanimous decision and unfortunately two members of that board were not there, the community board at the time. Safety traffic concerns, a review of the site by the council's senior traffic engineer has identified that a number of safety concerns and those are steepness, lack of traction and visibility. Interesting to note that the same traffic engineer wrote a report in 2007 on that area, not specifically over this area, there wasn't any talk of rocks in that area, saying that in the period 202 to 206, no crashes have been reported within fifty metres of the bend we're talking about. Estimated traffic volume on the roads proper was about a hundred and fifty a day. And then went on and said that an access track connects the beach to the road. He didn't say there are any problems with that access track, that has come only from the community board at Wackawide when somebody went up there and made a submission. So I argue that steepness, it's a paper road, it is reasonably steep, it's probably no longer than about five metres. Lack of traction on any paper road, it would be, could be or may not be, it depends on the conditions whether you'd use it. Visibility, I would maintain is excellent. I'd wonder when that statement's made, did those people that wrote this report view it themselves? I'd like them to have a look, they've talked to one other place about the police and seen them and agreeing with their opinion that it's unsafe. I'd refer them to the papers we've put out before from, amongst them there is the report from the past district commander of the police for Tava in Southland, Superintendent George Fraser, who's on our committee and has written a very good report on the matter and that would be a completely different view to what has been expressed in this report. I'd say that the steepness is a short track about a paper road and if you want to talk about steep tracks and unsafe areas, have a look, View Street, Pacific Street where there's plenty of traffic, a much steeper area and people have to take off and start there, so I don't see that as a problem. The lack of traction, it's a clay track, it's a paper road, it's no different to any other paper road and the visibility is excellent. There are other considerations on their report on page 37. Previously, vehicles using this track caused deep rutting in the wheelchairs. Well, that's quite wrong. If you look at the track and go there even now, I'll bet you the steep ruts are there, there is no, it is a natural runoff from, if you look at your photographs of your road, that's a natural runoff of water runs down the side of the road, goes down the edge of the track and finds its way onto the bay. That has caused ruts and has been there in the past and if it's too rutty, you don't drive your vehicle over it, it's never been corrected. So there's very little traffic on the road in any case. It then goes on to mention that it is an adequate surface protection which may result in damage to a new fibre optic cable that runs underneath the track. I would estimate, and I'll stand on record, if I'm wrong, that the optic cable does not run under that track. The optic cable runs four metres to the left of it where there is a big triangular sign, the one on one side of the bay, the one on the other, and that's their designated line where they have raised that thing. So that statement, I would disagree with it, yet to be proven, but I'd say it doesn't run under the road. It talks about the road is only 1.3 metres wide and if that's the case, I'd open it today because nobody would be able to drive down it, we wouldn't be having this meeting. This is not acceptable width for motor vehicles to share with pedestrians. I would maintain that there's no need to share with pedestrians, we don't, and I have never seen it in the past where people have tried to go down and walk up and drive at the same time, you'd either stop, it'd take about two minutes to clear the track of that. So you wouldn't do that. The original width was okay, so I don't see a great problem. It also mentions that there is another way to the bay which is via the front beach. That is irrelevant to me because if it is a paper road and it's legal to go over it, I don't see why any other road that may be around has any bearing on it. At the options, it talks about taking into consideration the review and safety advice obtained to date. The safety advice obtained to date has come from hearsay I think and probably from, I don't know how well that was researched, but I must say that we have been involved in it for fifteen years and nobody has ever come and asked an opinion on how we have formed our view. I'd also like to say that investigate whether it's possible to implement improvements. I don't think it's necessary to improve anything, it's not necessary to improve a paper road. The conclusions, allowing vehicles to use the track in its current state is considered to present a safety risk. I would totally disagree with that. They then go on to say there's a traffic safety review and there's a commentary, he does his review, and I'd like to read my answers because most of that I think can be answered and is not correct, a lot of the statements that are made. It talks about limited visibility. We say there's little visibility, this is blatantly wrong. See your own photographs, 7.5, better visibility than most roads in Warrington. With a 15k sign, clear visibility by all parties on the road, this contention of may cause an accident is weak indeed. The road in question has very light traffic. The track historically was little used, see them in error of report, where no danger foreseen. Then the next section went on to illegal parking. Vehicles are typically not left on the beach as the quote, this is wrong. When the tide is not full, vehicles can stay on the bay. When the tide is in, and I've seen this occasion, their vehicle would be parked on the track. Now, they can't go down the track if the tide's in, no history of any problem in the past, so there's less parking there now since the rocks have increased their track speeds. It says that they could go up there too fast or down too fast. What is the definition of considerable speed, they say. Who are these eyewitnesses of fifteen odd years ago? The track is about five metres and in a straight line. Any pedestrians can be seen before entering the track. Either way, the track would not be used until clear, either by pedestrians or vehicles. There'd be no accidents on this track, nor is there likely to be. This section also refers to towing trucks with boats up the sandy track. The track is not sandy, it's clay. One wonders whether the authors of these have ever been to the site. The incidence of boats and trailers on this track would be minimal and pose no problems. It then remonctions boy racers. In the writer's opinion, there's been no instance of boy racers in this area. There is little knowledge by the general public of the area, it's not easily seen and in fact it would not use it as their vehicle would be subject to wet sand. Boy racers don't go down there. The boy racers run a camping area, a grassed area, nowhere near the track concerned. Talks about shared use and children and motive statements about that. I've not observed a lot of children using this track and dispute that statement. Even so, any children would not be at risk. The incidence of usage and care in traversing the area would eliminate any concern. In terms of vulnerable road users, children making their way around most Warrington intersections would be at greater risk, that is crossing intersections on busy streets where no markings exist. There are no road markings, there's no crossings and the tar sealed roads in that area are all blind, there's right angled corners everywhere, this would be one of the easiest places to get up and down with vision on this track. Any view around Warrington, I invite any councillors, if they want to, I'll take them on a personal trip, I'd show, and I'd drive up that with a four wheel drive old vehicle I use on the bay and I could go up that track if you took those rocks away. In addition, that's a little bit at the end of the commentary, it says in addition and it notes other things. It talks about shared, it talks about the crossing, going over a form legal footpath. These noted houses, for example, those near the track, have to cross the footpath, there's less vision than the track. This was observed and commented upon by Jim Harland at a meeting with Andrew Noon and the writer some years ago. And I have taken over this period of course, two chief executives, one was Harland and the other one was our recently departed marching orders, and both of those people saw no reason for the rocks there. Andrew Noon was at a meeting with Jim Harland when he stated, well, look at that entrance up there, that posed more of a problem coming out through a fence and across the path than the vision that you could see coming up this track. The formation of footpaths around Warrington is rather late development and many property owners drive in and out across such paths. The track is no different, but probably better vision than many entrances. It refers, refers again to the dunes. There is none, see the definition of dunes I've mentioned. Other vehicle accesses, it talks about there being another access via the front beach. This is not relevant, there is a public right that should be preserved. The other road can be quite congested in holiday, good holiday weather and it passes through the plantation where there are trees and high winds which are quite unsafe. The existing track provides an alternative and could be invaluable if the plantation experienced fire, tree blockers or etc. Review on the forwarded to the police and ministry of transport, I'd ask, did those parties conduct their own inquiries or take for granted the sentiment of the report? Suggest councillors read the district commander Fraser's submission on the matter. If you've got time, I'd like to read it to you, if I have time. Find me out of time and let them do it.
Well, I'm sorry, you've actually taken seventeen minutes when you were twelve minutes in.
Yep.
So if you, some of that's been pre-circulated by, this is the one that you've sent us through?
I've sent many papers through, that's probably in there. My associate here has time, so he might want to...
No, it's ten minutes in total for the group. It's ten minutes in total for the rape persons association?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and that's, so you've had that ten minutes?
Oh, he's likely representing himself.
Oh, I was, oh, okay, well, I had understood that you were part of the thing.
Well, yeah, a couple of things.
Well, I was just gonna ask, if you're representing Brake Pads Association and Mr Anderson's representing himself, then we'll take questions of you first if you're happy to answer them.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you, any questions of Sir Julian? Lee, councillor Van Persen?
On the picture, 7.7 of our papers, shows a man standing on a corner and a 15 kilometre sign clearly evident on that fairly wide corner. You know this corner personally?
Very well.
And do most people abide by the 15 kilometres or are they forced to by the fact that it's a right angle bend?
I think they're forced to more than anything else.
So it would be unlikely that people would even be able to go around such a sharp corner at a lot more than...
No, I'd say that's correct.
Okay. And you, in the paperwork that you sent us and the emails that you sent us, there is a suggestion that what the council has done in terms of claiming authority under section 353, which is a sort of catchall general safety ability under the Act, that in fact it's not appropriate to use 353 because there aren't really any specific safety issues. Is this the nut really of what you were saying?
I think we're saying there isn't a safety issue and the references to part of the Acts etc. I'm not familiar with, but I did get a legal opinion and that's probably where that came from.
It comes from the legal opinion. In it, it says that Mr Visser relies on his authority under section 353, which is a general safety provision, but that what should have happened was that temporary closure under section 342 of the local government, that 1974, should have been invoked. So you're arguing that there's no safety issue and your council is also arguing in this email here that the provision that the council is relying on for its authority is also not the case. Are there any other Acts apart from 342, Schedule 10 and section 353 that need to be considered or do you think that's pretty much covered in the legal advice?
I would think that would be covered. I have known great depths of the knowledge of the legal matters except that all I know is the roads had common usage and a right for everybody to go over, but citizens of New Zealand, not Hawaiian nation on its own, and it's been used that way for many years. And because somebody, as a woman, that's decided it's unsafe, council have reacted on a community board level and then everybody's been trying to prove that was, the decision was right all the way through.
So you see it actually as a knee jerk safety reaction, someone's raised the flag and the council's robbed it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Noon?
Sir Julian, the recommendation, any comment with regards to the recommendation on the paper on page one?
Well, yeah, I think I did that.
I think it's another question.
Well, we've got three options in front of us. We haven't any, at this point, any other options to consider. Your argument, as councillor Van Persen has identified, is there is no safety issue. Question is, in my mind is, there's obviously a need to rectify the current situation, formalise the current situation, but it's the step two that I'm interested in.
Step two is in your court, but I mean, you would know that I've had two meetings with two past chief executives, they were of the view that there was no problems in the area. Every place you read the submissions that were put in, other than some emotive ones, that most of them cite history etc. You could take the rocks away today, that probably legally you should do that, you don't need to do anything with the land. If we can't drive over, so be it, but I'll be quite happy to drive over and prove it. Perhaps you should all come out and have a look at it. You could if you wanted to, cut the bit of the growth away from the side of it, so there's no argument about 1.3. I wouldn't open it up so easily to make it a thorough, people want to use it because I don't think a lot of people will ever use it. It's because you go down, you're onto basically wet sand, you only can do it on certain times of the day when the tide's not in and people don't generally want to put their vehicles in it.
Through the chief, I just have one other question. My recollection of the original reason why this corner was considered from a safety point of view is that the community board were reviewing safe walking spaces throughout all the communities that essentially had schools within them and that's my recollection, the community was surveyed or questioned about the need to improve those walking spaces to and from school. Have you any recollection of that process happening? It probably happened about seventy-four, five, six, something along those lines.
Through you, chairman. The recollection I have is clearly meeting with you and looking at the area and the first thing, question was to ask you with the chief executive there, why were the rocks placed there? And you said because it was concerned, you came down with Alice Dear Morrison, concerns that the boy racers were running all over the bay. We said there's been no evidence of that, that's not correct. Then the, and I, well, the other inference was that no, it was probably because it was unsafe. And that's all the comments I've had on that issue. In terms of walking tracks and safety or footpaths, no ever, that I know of and other people at Warrington on our community area extra have ever had any communication on that front.
Councillor Lord?
Excuse me, Sir Julian, I've got a question. Looking at the photo on 7.5, if you're driving up that track and you get, or your track's halfway between those two rocks...
That's page five of seven.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, if you were parked halfway between where those two rocks are, how far can you see left and right down those roads? I just, I'm not sure, do they, do they carry on for some distance or do they whip back round a corner?
They carry on for some distance. I think Don tells me beforehand that he has some information on that, which I might be better qualified as a roadman to talk to them, but there is plenty of room there.
Certainly you wouldn't see that if you were parked there in a stationary position, you'd have to give way?
Yeah, if you're parked there.
Getting out onto the road is not a risk?
No.
In your opinion, from cars that you can't see?
No, you'll see more cars there than you'll see anywhere else on most of the roads in Warrington.
Yep. Now, the other question I just had, if you were putting a boat, would you back off the road right down the track?
Sorry?
If you were putting a boat there, would you back off the track?
No, no.
Drive down?
No, drive down, turn around on the bay. If you're taking a boat off, you take it off there. And what I do is I launch a clinker built boat there, I drive down there, you'll see the rocks down the bottom there, there's little stones around, it's not a racetrack, could never be. Back around, push the boat off, go home. When the tide comes in, we row it over to our own little bay in front of our house, which is about three or five hundred yards away.
Just, why not be happy enough to come on a boat and have a look?
Yep, happy to take you all out there any time you like.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all questions of you, Sir Julian. Mr Anderson, I didn't realise you were going to speak as well, sorry for the miscommunication. Do you have other things you want to add to that? As quickly as possible, please.
Chair, thank you.
We've got five minutes of none of it.
I haven't actually registered to speak, so I don't know whether that's a problem.
I, well, it was, I had understood that you were coming along as part of the Warrington...
I could understand that.
Yeah, but we did expect you, I thought you were speaking together, that's all.
I do just have some information that might help councillor with distances. I've produced the DCC visibility code for intersections on roads less than a hundred kilometres per hour and a local road requires at the maximum intersection with a national highway, twenty-five metres. I've measured the Google map which you were trying to put on the wall and in my view, the minimum distance there is sixty-five, sixty-three metres. And the only other thing really in shorthand is that when Julian approached me earlier in the year, I was content that the rocks were there and really questioned them. But having been involved with a proposal in the city for a road manipulation, we've become aware that there was no provision to permanently prevent vehicles using a legal road unless the road is stopped. And that is not what you've done. And so I was totally convinced that the rocks were illegal and you have not followed proper procedures and you should do so.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or...
I'm happy to leave that stuff for you.
Are you, thank you, are you happy to take questions from councillor Z?
Don, just given a couple of questions that councillor has asked and a comment that you made, do you think it would be beneficial to resolving this issue if it was a site visit by councillors?
I don't think I could justify the whole of councillors going up there, it's a long way. I think those who live in that area surely should be able to resolve it. There is no visibility difficulty. You've heard Sir Julian talk about traction, I don't know what else you'd like to say. I think if you want, if you want vehicles not to use this, follow the proper procedure, that's my position.
The point of my question is that while there may be a lot of people who live in the area who are aware of the potential for danger, I think that that's an issue that's being mentioned. My own feeling is that because of some questions have been asked, that there is doubt in some councillors' minds and if that was to be resolved, it may make it easier for councillors to make a decision, which we're asked to do today.
Thank you, I just have to do a technical procedural motion, I'm just going to move that we may have started the meeting because I meant to start within half an hour of the time. Thank you. Councillor Noon, all in favour, please, here. Aye. Gates, Garrett, sorry, I've got other questions.
Sure. One second, a minute.
No. Yeah, councillor Wood.
Thank you, a question for both gentlemen perhaps. The nearby accessway, some six hundred and fifty metres away from the location of this track, is that unsuitable for the purposes that you wish to use?
No, not really. That track, the track is possibly only used in summertime when the weather's good and at those times, that track on the main beach can be more than congested. It is a track that runs through a sandy base through the trees to the back beach. There is often, if there's a safety issue, I'd be looking at that. There's people walking with prams, that's where people walk, there's people, holiday people, there's trucks going through, there's boats going through, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that at all and I don't think it's relevant because we're not shutting the old Mount Carvel road because there's a... And I don't think it's relevant because we're not shutting the old Mount Carvel road because there's another road that's quicker. In fact, it is quicker the way I go rather than going right through the beach and adding to the congestion on what might be a good day. I would imagine that in terms, there's none of these reports ever state into them how how big was the problem of how many vehicles used that track? I'd estimate it, movements a year, probably wouldn't exceed fifty. I think the whole thing's a mountain in the wild, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wiley?
Sir Julian, what was the main usage of the track before? Was it simply for people to unload their boats?
No, it was to unload the boats, it was probably, and when the tide's out in the area, and I welcome anybody who wants to come out there incidentally, I'll take them around. The old days before the DCC got involved, we used to have a walk around once a year with the chairman of the Wackawidi County Council before we'd assault the peaks. But no, the track has been used very spasmodically and it has been for the odd launching of boats, the odd small children, it's a very safe little area down there. Maybe take a canoe off or do things like that. Or otherwise, just using that area to access further along the beach, which is about half a mile. When the tide's out, there is a channel and that gets very warm, we've got good weather, good swimming area. And that's a good way to go from outside of the Warrington, if you like, from the coastal, from the main roadside of Warrington.
That's all questions, thank you very much, this item will come up at number seven, you're more than welcome to stay and listen to the debate if you so wish. We'll watch it on channel thirty nine on Saturday.
Thank you very much.